Call the meeting order and ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden? Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum present. I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting seat and ask you stand for the prayer and pledge, please. That's right. Precious heavenly Father, we are so grateful to you for allowing us to live in this community. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve our neighbors and our friends and the duties that we've been elected to do. We ask, Father, that you would be with us tonight and that you would remind us that we are a community and that the things that we do are in duty to the things that we have sworn to and the things that we hope that you would lead us to. We ask that you do the same with our state and national leaders as they take up our business. And as we've just come from a memorial day, we ask that you be with those who serve our country, both here and overseas, and those who are in harm's way, we ask that you would protect them and bring them to us again. We thank you for all the many blessings you give us and we ask these things in your holy name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the May 13th council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing and ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee? Mr. Mullins? Ms. Walden? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. We'll move to old business. Ladies and gentlemen, if you give me just a moment, we are to consider ordinance 009. That's to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning of 700 Nelson Road. Since this is a public hearing, we have a number of you here. Allow me just a moment to tell you exactly how we will structure this. Once it's been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, I'll ask the clerk to read the proposed amendment, then hear the advisory decision of Planning and Zoning Commission. I recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment, and I will hear or ask to hear from any person or persons who would like to speak in opposition. Then you will have opportunity for rebuttal should there be opposition. Then while I recognize any person or persons who would like to speak, I would ask that you first approach the podium, give your name and address for the record. And while anyone is encouraged to speak, I ask that in the essence of time, that you keep your comments as brief as possible and certainly germane to this subject. The hearing is to consider ordinance 009, and I would ask the clerk if he would announce that it's been correctly posted and advertised.
Yes, sir, it has been.
Would you read the ordinance by caption, please?
Mr. Gudaku took to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance submitting the land development code to rezon approximately 54 acres from SFD with a special use for townhomes to PD planned development. This property is part of property currently addressed as 700 Nelson Road, tax mount 071, parcel 009. This property is currently owned by Dan Tomlin and will be sold in order to develop 124 units with 500 bedrooms.
And would you present the advisory decision of planning and zoning?
It was recommended for approval.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we move into the testimony part, it's obvious that this issue has garnered a lot of interest due to your attendance here tonight. I respectfully ask that you would respect the dignity and decor of these proceedings and refrain from any outbursts in the audience. Any questions or comments that you might have, I would ask that you would approach the podium in order to do that and be recognized. Also with a large group like this, there are times when someone will come up and repeat the same thing that someone has right before them. I would just ask you to be aware of redundancy, and if that is the case, have one, someone speak for several people. That'll move things along and it won't be a situation where something has been spoken over and over again. After this, I'll give you, we will suspend this meeting and give you an opportunity to exit if you so wish. So there's no need to, no need to, I feel like you're interrupting anything, I'll give you, certainly give you an opportunity to do that. Now, is anyone that'd like to speak in favor? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Joel. This is something new on our agenda tonight. I'd like to call on Ms. Mervyn Graham to give a presentation on this. Sorry, Joel.
This rezoning is at 700 Nelson Road, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning from SFD with a special use for townhomes to PD which is planned development. A planned development rezoner is a site-specific rezoning in which everybody has received their site plans. The development is 54 acres. It will have 124 units with a total of 500 bedrooms in each unit. The site plan does consist of one emergency exit which is off of Nelson Road. This road would be 26 feet wide, but also on the site plan, the applicant is proposing to relocate a portion of Pumping Station Road. And Pumping Station Road now has an 80-foot easement which is in favor of the city of Milledgeville, and a gate currently sits there on Pumping Station Road which is the city's. So the gate would also have to be relocated to where the city, of course, gives approval so the city can get to its pumping station down there. So approval of this site plan, of this, you know, application does approve the relocation of Pumping Station Road for this. So I just wanted to make, you know, all the council members aware of that. But of course, with your approval, you can put in any stipulations or anything like that that you may choose with this if you so decide to go that way in your applicant, in your choice. Everything kinda times out if it's for that too.
All right, it's on video, but it's not coming up this time. Oh, 'cause you got to turn it on. Oh, it is on.
It just times out if it's. Anyway, I just wanted all council members to be aware of the Pumping Station Road issue. If there were any questions, I guess, concerning that on this approval.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Ask one question now, zone now, SFD.
Yes, with the special use for townhomes.
With the special use for townhomes, and you said, and what is being asked for is site-specific, and that site plan was submitted, what is submitted an alternative if something were, you know?
It would just be for townhomes. It would have to make, you know, the regulations go to setbacks.
Nothing else would have to be submitted before council?
No, not, nothing at all. Unless, you know, choose a behavior for something which would not come over this board.
Mervyn, can I ask you one question? Not too long ago, this, this council met and we adopted an ordinance so that there was no more than three unrelated because we had had so many problems with more students being in there if it was more than three unrelated. So this city adopted an ordinance to stop that and to try to enforce that ordinance. I know we have, are trying now to enforce that, but this, if it is a planned development, it would allow more than that. Is that not correct?
That is correct, because that only applies when, you know, you're single, you're SFR, SFD, and districts that would not apply to this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So this would not be in compliance with our ordinance. We would be basically voting to do something different from our ordinance. Would look that way.
Any other questions for Ms. Walden?
Okay, it's just not coming out. I'll try and, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Burns?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, this, I represent, my name is Joel Burns, and I'm a local attorney, and I represent Mr. Dan Tomlin. And Mr. Tomlin has this property that is subject to this change of ordinance, and it is currently zoned in a SFD with special use for townhomes and can be developed immediately like that. But this planned development will provide more safeguards for the city than if it was in the townhomes. And I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Chad Howey, who is the developer and proposes to do this, this development, and he's going to explain it to you.
Good evening. My name is Chad Howey. Address is 8200 Roberts Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, 30350. Thank you, sir. I am with Sanctuary Companies. We are a student housing development company based in Atlanta, Georgia. We develop projects in university towns across the country, as far west as Texas and in Georgia, we've done several. We have approximately 11 to 12 years' experience in this, and we have a, a program that is on a national scale and is award-winning program. When we develop these type of projects, we have a goal in mind, and that goal is to deliver the best student housing that we can for the community that we're delivering it to. This particular development is unique in that Milledgeville has a set of, when we look at student housing, it has a criteria that we look for, and in that, we have a, a specific type of housing that we do, and that is a more of a single-family residential-style community. The community is not apartments. We do not do the three-story garden style that you've seen here in town and in other places, if you've visited those, that are purpose-built student housing. This community that we're proposing is a mixture of what we call cottages and manor houses. It is essentially one-bedroom through three, four-bedroom houses that are laid out in a community-style environment where we have the ability to create a walking community where it's a, lack of a better word, a traditional neighborhood design, yet it's one development. So in that development, we create a place for the students to live and interreact with the other students that doesn't exist in your typical multifamily environment. This particular site, as we looked at Milledgeville and identified the reasons as to why we would want to be here, one of those, and one of the biggest ones, is in towns like Milledgeville where the colleges are located directly in the middle of the campus, excuse me, and they're in the campus, but in the middle of the town, those provide a synergy in the center of town, but it also creates an environment where there are a lot of residential houses that have been impacted around the area, and the students that can't find affordable housing or quality housing will go to and gravitate towards those residential houses. And if you drive around Milledgeville, you can see what happens is that over a period of time, those houses, then, we're having students in them, the value of those actually starts to drop because they become rental, and you can drive around Milledgeville and see $99 specials. What we provide is an alternative that I think helps that situation in every town that we go to, and that is a purpose-built community that gives the students the amenities that they don't have. One of the amenities that they go for when they're adjacent to town is, or inside the town area, is the proximity to campus. So we design a set of amenities inside the community that gives them reasons to come away from town, and in that, in that community, they have the ability to do the things that they wouldn't, alternatively have either on campus or in town. This particular community is one that has a 11,000-square-foot clubhouse. It has a 180,000-gallon pool. It has all of the amenities that college kids love to do inside. It's a gated community so that it is private, and when we have the type of students that we have in Milledgeville where there's a high, higher percentage of the Greek students, those students in this town, as we have done our research, they have a hard time finding a place to meet, in the chapter halls, and those type of organizations need a place to meet. Well, one of the things that we've done with our site plan is we have created a area where we have, quote, "that chapter hall" for those students. So after talking to the different, and we met with pretty much all the heads of the sororities and fraternities, we designed a building that they'll be able to utilize for that as they live on campus. So it will help ease some of the strain that's here in town on trying, for them trying to find their different locations. So we think we have a well-rounded community, and we found a place in town on Mr. Tomlin's property that, as we found out in the previous meeting that we were at, there's a lot of concern about the amount of water and the flooding issues. Scott is our engineer, and he'd be more than happy to have him come up and talk about the different flooding issues that could potentially happen and our alternatives, and working with the city engineers to what we need to do to make sure that if we do have a flooding issue there, it will be an access issue. We would not be building any of our structures in the flood zone. There's no flood, and this is to 100-year flood zone, so as Scott, I believe, said last time, that's a 1% chance that it would ever flood, and if it does, it's going to flood above the contour line, and all of our houses are above that line. So those would not be impacted. The only thing that we have in the flood zone is one parking lot, and that is a few inches beneath that flood zone. So the fact that it may or may not flood, would, it could flood, but it would be coming up on tires as we drive through the town anyway. So we have addressed the other concerns that the planning commission had and the residents had and brought to our attention last time. One of those is the gravestone. We have, as well as access to that, we have designed in the, the second entrance to the community, a location where, as you've seen on your revised site plan, where we have a turn-in with parking spots. We have taken and put a fence around the grave and made it almost sort of a marquee location. Thank you, Alex. Where the... I'll pull that back so they can see.
On our secondary entrance road right here, we have taken and added a parking spot, and one of the audience members had a good suggestion that you have a trolley that takes people to see the different areas of town where they can come in and park, and we have a walkway over to the gravestone over here. It's completely fenced off from the community and left in the natural setting. One of the other comments was what we were doing along Greenway, but property, the Greenway Authority had, had it under construction, what they'd like doing in the future. And one of the things we had done is added a bike and walking path that would come down along the property line and end up to connect to the Greenway at some point, to connect the residential neighborhood as back over here. One of the reasons that we did this picture in the planning commission, excuse me, the planning comments last time, was that we couldn't see the proximity of the community to the adjacent houses, streets, and roads. So we had this board made to show you the difference between where the community's at and where the roads are at. So this is South Ebert Street, Underwood Road coming in, Nelson Road. Nelson Road comes back, we have our second entrance here, we have our main entrance coming in here, and this is the location where Pumping Station Road will be relocated around this area. Currently, it goes straight through. We simply put a curve along it, along the topo line, and we will relocate the gate. The papers that I'm looking at, and then we go mention that we needed to do that, we would do that anywhere that's located right here. The other concern that we had was the, the Greenway piece back here and the connectivity to it. The one thing we couldn't show last time, and I'd like to show you, is that we will be donating this piece of property along through here with what we're not currently using into the project itself, to the Greenway so as they can take the Greenway from here and expand through this entire area to be utilized for a Greenway space. There is a pumping station here, sewer outfall, and lines that run through. We have reworked our parking lots per conversation with engineering to make sure that we do not have any impact from those, and redesign that as well. So I believe that we have answered all of the concerns and questions that we had from planning and zoning and from the residents and the neighborhood with the latest layout that we have. So before they ask any questions.
I'd like to answer the question.
Sure.
On this panel up here, when you come to town, I mean, obviously, you say you've dealt with these projects before, who up here have you talked to? Anybody?
Mr. Howey, if you would step up so we can hear you outside.
Yes, ma'am. I myself have not spoken with anyone on the panel. We have a company, and we have different developers in that company. Alex Hertz, to hear this evening, he could speak to that.
Okay, can you tell me who you've talked with?
Yes, give your name and address, please.
Alex Hertz, 230 Chafin Road, Roswell, Georgia. I've met with several. I know Mr. Bentley, mostly met with the city planning and zoning and engineering. Dan, a landowner and says the middle, he's been talking, I think, to everyone on this panel. And I think he gave...
What now?
Dan Tomlin has been speaking with mostly the panel here.
With everyone on this panel?
I don't, I can't speak for him, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Okay. Just wondering.
Okay.
Because I can tell you hadn't spoke to me.
It is, Dan did call me last week and said that, Ms. Walden, was, would like my phone number, and I gave him my personal cellphone, my home phone and my business phone.
I didn't call him and tell him I wanted your phone.
I don't know. I'm just saying, I got, I did get a phone call, and he did mention that.
But I didn't do that.
Anything else, counsel?
And I do have one other question. Being that this is in the flood plain, and, and we do, one of the main concerns that my district has is as you go down Underwood Road and you get to Pumping Station Road, sometimes it is flooded, and it's, it doesn't just happen every now and then. Last year, it happened four times, and it's underwater. Underwood Road is, it's blocked off. You can't get on Under, you can't get to Pumping Station Road because it is blocked off. Also, the water goes so deep and so far out that it even floods Warren Street. And I don't know if you've ever seen it or not, but we've got some pictures tonight that some of them will show you just how bad it is. Is it your intention to fix that so that, are you, as a developer, gonna fix that?
Well, we've, we've talked to engineering about that, and Scott has, has spoken with them. As I understand, the Underwood Road and Pumping Station Road issue, if we were to elevate Pumping Station Road, the elevation of that would bring the road out of the flood zone, but it wouldn't prevent any flooding. So it's going to continue to flood, and that's why we added, and the engineering asked us to add, the secondary entrance off of Nelson.
And I understand the secondary entrance, but that's back there where the, the, where the gate is, like where it goes into Pumping Station, and I'm sure maybe it floods back there too. I don't know, I hadn't seen that. But the part that I'm concerned about is where Pumping Station Road, a number, a lot of times, that road is completely blocked off on Underwood Road so that you can't even get to Pumping Station Road.
How do the current neighbors get out of there when they can't go down Underwood Road?
They have to figure out another way to go.
Right. The Nelson Road, you know, empties into, and there's, I think, I don't know the names of the streets, it might doesn't go out that far, so bear with me, but there's three additional streets that come off of that that feed out of that area. So they have egress and ingress to the area off the back street. One thing to keep in mind is that we utilize a shuttle on the property, and the majority of the students will use that shuttle to go to classes. So even though we have five...
Are you planning on widening Pumping Station Road enough that a shuttle and a car could pass? Because right now, they couldn't pass.
That's right. We have an 80-foot-wide easement where we can improve Pumping Station Road, and we plan on repaving that so that you do have the ability to pass. I mean, we can't have cars coming and going, and it would be a, an improvement there. As far as the elevation, that's something I'd have to let my engineer speak to. But as far as the width of it and what we'd be doing to improve it, right now, it's, it, it looks almost like a, a secondary road, and it's, the place is coming apart. We want to make sure that the community has a nice entrance. So we would repave from Underwood Road all the way back down to where the entrance, the Arcadia entrance is at, and then put the gate back in place for the city right past the entrance.
And you're gonna build up all of Underwood Road and all of Pumping Station Road and all the where it doesn't flood?
No, I didn't say that. I said we would, we would pave and do what we need to do to accommodate. But as far as raising the road, I'd have to let Scott speak to that. I don't, I don't know the, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, ma'am.
With all of this flood plain work, I know one time in Ms. Schinholster's area, she had a little ditch, wasn't, wasn't very big, that flooded, and we had a meeting on it, and she was asking that something be done about it. And this council was told that we had to have a corps of engineers to come in anytime you were fooling with flood plain lands or flood plain areas. Has a corps of engineer looked at this?
Scott, you want to speak to that?
Okay. Are you one of the corps of engineers? Okay, I just wonder.
My name is Scott Johnson. My address is 371 Main Street, Warrenton, Georgia. I'm the engineer for the project. Anytime you, you add fill or take fill away from the flood Anytime you, you add fill or take fill away from the floodplain, you need to involve the corps of engineers. In this case, none of the buildings or none of the improvements will be in the floodplain. With the exception of the entrance in Pumping Station Road and one of the parking lots. So no, the corps of engineers has not looked at this. The corps of engineers does not need to look at this until the time that we make plans to add fill in those areas.
Until you decide to add fill in those areas.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you gonna raise your parking deck that you've got for these kids to park in? At that point, are you gonna call them to come in and, because you're gonna have to raise it up or either your car's gonna be floating off.
Well, there's only one parking lot located in the floodplain and that's the parking lot that's, it's.
Yeah, it's the real big one right there. Excuse me, ma'am.
And if we will, we will probably not bring it out of the floodplain. But if we do decide to bring it out of the floodplain, then yes, we'll have to involve the corps of engineers.
But you will probably not bring it out of the floodplain?
There's, there's no requirement that, there's no corps of engineers requirement that you cannot locate parking within a floodplain.
Wow, I should, one wouldn't, wouldn't want to be living somewhere and my car float away, but I guess that's okay. That's, that's the questions that I needed to.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel.
Mr. Howie, if I could. Couple of questions that I've been asking, I don't know if you're gonna be the one to answer them or. But one thing I do want to find out is in, in more in exact terms than just telling what you, what you see in a community. But how do you go into a community and actually assess that your need is going to be embraced? I would assume with the kind of investment that you're looking at. That you've done your due diligence, but.
Sure.
If you could explain that to this panel, please.
You're absolutely right, when we make the type of financial investment that this project would be. We, we do a substantial amount of investigation into the community. How do we find a community to develop a project in is a number of different ways. We employ a market analysis company that will take and look at all of the numbers. That's one way we do it and identify potential communities there. In other areas, there are schools that put out proposals and request student housing. And in some cases, put out proposals and request private developers to, to assist. Because the demand is so great that they can't handle it themselves financially. And then Milledgeville is one of the cases where we have friends and business, business partners that their children attend the school. And in this case, we have a substantial number of friends and business partners that attend the school here. And they have said many times after visiting our other communities, I wish you would build one in Milledgeville because my daughter would like a place like this to stay. And in this case, that's how this started. Milledgeville is unique in that it has a. A school that is more or less a, has evolved into a boutique school inside the Georgia system. It is the, it has now been branded the liberal arts school for Georgia. And with that. Comes a different type of student than attends the universities on a, on a more regular basis. And it is, there's a lot of, a lot of students that attend here for the programs that the school has. So when that happens, you have, I mentioned earlier, a high concentration of students that are in the Greek life here. Milledgeville has a unique situation where over twenty percent of the students are involved or pledged as Greek. And the reason that's important is it tells us that there is a very active. Community that is. I can't think of a better word, it's. It is, I've lost my, I've lost, I've lost my word, we use it all the time, I apologize. When you have a high concentration of Greek students, you have students that are looking for a house. Instead of apartments and housing and that, and in your typical dorm environment. And a lot of colleges try to assist that. Georgia has done a, an admirable job with what they've done with their Greek housing. And then you have schools such as, a good example would be FSU. FSU doesn't do any housing, but they, they have helped the Greek communities purchase housing along the periphery of the university. So they have that strong core. The reason they do that is because it helps enrollment. And if you were to, Mr. Bentley, if you were to talk to the mayor in Auburn, Alabama, for example, give him a call. He would tell you that our Creekside, that Creekside community that I helped on, develop, almost ten years ago now, eleven years ago. We were, we were, we were given the key to the city when we developed that. Because we helped create, remove, fixed a blighted community. And in, in, in the doing that, that Greek community had a place to go. It comes in the style of the neighborhood and the buildings that we built. We're not building just another set of apartments. We're building something that is specific to address a need that we see in Milledgeville. And in that market study that we had done, it identified the number of Greeks that we have. It identified the total number of college kids. And once we took that information, we met with the university, I had a conversation with them. And, you know, they are looking at making, they have a freshman requirement right now. They have looked at adding a sophomore requirement because they're having an issue with one of their communities and keeping it full. But the communities that they're, and also, I'd like to say in Milledgeville, they also presented the fraternities and sororities with a plan. So that the school could have Greek housing, but they turned them down. Lot of reasons behind that, but what we're offering them is, I think, a solution to what I see driving around the town. Where I'm seeing these beautiful houses right downtown being turned into party houses. And what we will do is provide a different situation where they're not free to rein, but they're in a more structured environment. But it's not as structured as what the school does as far as the rules and regulations. We have extensive rules and regulations that we put in place for that, but we don't. We don't have some of the same restrictions and in doing that, it provides a situation where those students are able to come out and leave. Or be in an environment that they prefer to be in. When you look at that dynamic, we have a, a extensive market study that we do that backs up those numbers. So when you look at Milledgeville and you look at the numbers, is there a lot of student housing available to be put into the community? No, I would say that we're at the point in Milledgeville where unless the enrollment grows with the university. It has grown over the years, but the university is, because it is becoming a liberal arts, the liberal arts university, they're trying to cap that enrollment. That, if, if I were as, if I were to come in as another developer or other developments behind us come in and do this. I would say then you're getting to the point where you're saturating the market. Right now, our market study shows that we're not saturating the market, but we are meeting the market demand.
Do you have anybody here from the college that supports that? I know when you did your zoning board meeting, you had some from, you were saying something about GMC and the general and what have you. I haven't heard you mention any of that tonight.
That was in reference to a specific question, but if you've got one, I'll be glad to answer it.
Do you have anybody here from Georgia College that's supporting this project and, and, and what you're saying?
No, I do not.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
You'll have your time.
Yes, sir.
A couple more questions and this may be engineering. I just wanted to, I've been asked about the asphalt and, and looking at the environmental site assessment, which is extremely dry reading. I noticed there was a retention pond that was in the vicinity and wasn't real clear exactly the development of the retention pond. Exactly where it came from, didn't know whether it came from the church or what. And didn't know, been asked about the amount of asphalt and the change in the environment, so on and so forth. And I just wanted to get some type of assessment as to what we're looking at as, as a percentage maybe of the total development. What is going to be covered in asphalt? What, what do you do engineering wise to assure that the surrounding areas? I know as you go further and closer to the river, you're gonna get into wetlands and so on and so forth. That you're not gonna be changing some of this existing environment.
Well, I'll, I'll start by answering that, that we've already had wetlands delineated on the property. Well, along the river, there's very little on the property. We will not be impacting any wetlands at all, we will avoid them completely. As far as the percent of, of impervious surface asphalt building tops, I don't have that number off the top of my head. That will be part of the engineering site plan that we do for the city. We'll do those calculations and we will mitigate whatever stormwater effects there are through detention. Whether it be underground detention or a classic detention pond, as you've probably seen. But when, when we're, when we're done, the amount of stormwater, the amount of peak discharge in stormwater will be at or below the current levels. Current undeveloped levels. Does that answer your question?
One more question while you're there.
Sure.
One thing that I'm looking at in, in, in trying to look at these maps, it's, it's difficult at times to be able to try to figure out exactly. Buffer wise, what kind of acreage, footage, two hundred feet, three hundred feet? What are, what are we looking at as far as the surrounding property? And I guess out of the fifty-six acres, is there more acreage there or the fifty-six is what's to be developed or a portion of the fifty-six?
The fifty, fifty-four, I believe it is, is, is the area that's.
That's the entire area. So, you know, this is not fifty-four, the entire thing is fifty-four. One note on that. We are purchasing, Scott's right, we're developing the fifty-four acres, but we're purchasing more than that. And we're not including that in the rezoning request, which is creating this ten acre buffer between the community and any of the residential. So as far as the location of how close any of the units would be to any of the residential houses. As a visual reference, they're greater than a football that's away from the football field. So that's three hundred plus yards or feet to you in terms of state, you know, a hundred, forty plus yards, a hundred and ten yards to the closest one.
Anything else, counsel?
I'll hush for now.
Safety concern for me with this project. And I understand that there is problem on Underwood Road. Alternative Road.
Well, we, we have given it thought and the way that we've proposed it is as proposed in our traffic impact study that we did. And that traffic impact study says that that tie-in has very minimal impact on that intersection. And the traffic study was done without the advantage of having the firm aware that we're doing a shuttle to school. Which will carry the majority of the kids back and forth. And that shuttle will minimize the majority of the traffic that would impact that intersection. So you take the traffic study itself and you actually minimize it even further. And I believe that when we looked at that last time, the, the, the traffic impact was marginal at best when they, when they looked at that. Because it's, remember, as Ms. Resold said, it's four days a year. So there's three hundred and sixty-one days out of a year or two that we won't be using that. But if we did have to use it, those four days, plus the fact that we're using the.
Sorry, it floods four day, four times, but it doesn't just last a day, sometimes it's a lot longer than that.
Understood, right. But anyway, I, 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 I think that we've addressed it with the engineering department and, and done a. And widened the road to twenty-six feet to make sure that there's no issues coming through that. And where that intersection ties in, those improvements, it'll tie in in such a way there that the, the study that we did shows that it'll have a minimal impact to the intersection.
Anything else, counsel?
I just wanna ask you a question to go along with, with, I, I hear what you're saying. And I, you know, I, I can understand the concern about safety. Cause I live in a neighborhood where there are lots of college students. And they are usually, and they're about five minutes away from the college. And they get up in the morning to go to an eight o'clock class going about fifty miles an hour in a fifteen mile per hour area. And. Up another stop sign sometimes is not an option with them, they just fly. They fly and they're so far out in the road by the time they stop that it scares you half to death. And, you know, it's, it's, it's always frightening in the morning when I back out of my driveway, just to not get rear ended. At, at that time of day when students are in, in their full array, getting ready to go to school. So what she's talking about, you know, when you have students that do that and, and there are some that won't take the shuttle. I don't care how much you offer it to them, they're gonna drive their car because they need to go somewhere and somewhere and somewhere else after they leave. And then when they fly out of there going that fast, what are you planning to do to kind of eliminate some of that? Or maybe help then with the neighborhood concerns about the traffic?
Well, what our plan does not show, but we would install along our drive coming in, arriving at Nelson Road. Is when we have long stretches going into a community, we put in the speed humps to slow them down to make sure they're not doing that forty-five to fifty through a fifteen. And as well, you have, you have two stop signs at that, where you come to that point, you stop and then you turn and you stop. I think that in itself would slow them down dramatically in, in that area. Now, you know, I, I can't speak to how someone's going to drive, but we're gonna do what we can internally because we don't want to have. This community is very pedestrian oriented, we like the fact that they can get out, walk, ride bikes, walk their dogs. Animals, whatever it happens to be. And along that road will be part of the walking trail that we'll be putting in. And I don't want any of, I don't want the liability personally to make sure that this, anyone speeding along this area. So as we install that road here, it will have the speed humps on our portion. As far as Nelson Road, we've got the two stop signs in Underwood, I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Aren't you, when the Greenway was here, I don't see them here tonight, but when they were here the other night at the planning zoning. I understood it was twenty acres that, that you were gonna give to them.
We're, we're gonna donate the remaining acreage.
Remaining acreage. Also, there was mention of fifty thousand dollars for a bridge.
The bridge has been estimated to cost fifty thousand dollars. And we said to the Greenway that if you need assistance in putting that bridge in so that we can connect our community to the Greenway. We'll be happy to contribute whatever we can towards that to make it happen. And, but we have no agreement with the, with the, with the Greenway in writing. But we have a verbal, you know, understanding that they do want to connect across the creek. And we would like to connect across the creek to the Greenway so that the students. So that the students who do want to bike to class can use the Greenway across and straight up into town, which is much safer than coming out on Underwood Road and biking in that direction.
Anything else, council? I've got a couple of things, Mr. Howie.
Yes, sir.
First, allow me to make a statement to you, we want to allow Greek housing over there. We've already designated places for that. I didn't want you to base everything on that.
They can't hang their shingle either, yeah.
If the flooding, or when the flooding does occur and it, even if it doesn't close Pumping Station Road, but it actually closes Underwood, are, are you, are you, are you willing, since this is a gated community, to close Pumping Station Road and have the secondary road so that they won't be coming out on Pumping Station?
Yes, and in fact, we've, we've got our gate software set up so that it would do that anyway.
And I hope by that time you'll be a little more familiar with the route that they need to take, including the shuttle?
Correct.
You can have a manager on site?
Yes.
All the time?
Yes. And we have onsite security as well, 24 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Bentley, I have a question. Is your development limited to GC and SU students?
Fair Housing would prohibit me from limiting it to any one. The only protected class under Fair Housing is 55 and older. So we do market specifically to college students, but I can't stop anyone from renting there. But I would say this, that the way that the communities, purpose-built student housing communities in general, the ones that exist in Millidgeville right now, charge a rate at which does not, the market rate apartments are not competitive, or were not competitive with market rates. So there would be very few people that would decide to live there, I think, and pay the price for that.
But if, like, like in, in one of the quads, you could very well have three students that are in school and one, one person in the community that's not, right?
Yes, we do not, we, we can't prohibit that, correct.
Anything else, council? Thank you, Mr. Howie. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Yes, sir.
I'm David Pettigrew, address is 132 Water says Drive. And I just want to bring something to the council's detention you may or may not have thought about before, but my concern and my reason for supporting this issue is the economic impact. I'm a private businessman, I'm CPA, and I have seen a number of small businesses go out of business over the last four or five years. If you're on a W-2, on your, you're on retirement income, you may not notice it, but if you've got a spouse or a child who's looking for a job, you know how hard jobs are to find. This development is going to bring an opportunity in the town during the construction for a lot more people to have good jobs, to work those good jobs, and it's going to also create jobs throughout the community. And I think it'll be a real economic boost to this area. Another thing that we need to look at, as I've heard different numbers thrown around, but my understanding is the project's going to cost over $20 million. And we assume it'll be assessed at that amount. That's going to bring, according to my calculations, and they may not be exact, but it's going to bring about $100,000 per year in taxes to the city. While I understand the problems, I understand the people worried about the traffic, I understand the people who worried about the noise, it's just hard for me to understand how this community and other officials can turn down $100,000 a year or over 10 years, a million dollars in additional tax revenue. The other things that it's going to be something that this community can be proud of, it's going to be a good living arrangement, the people here are, well, I think the college kids and who will be using it will be kind of, won't be quite as much disturbance in the downtown areas there is now. But overall, what I see the negatives, and there certainly are negatives, I think when you consider the economic impact, it'd be a big plus. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Yeah. Just approach Pettigrew, please.
My name's Bob Urban. I live on Nelson Road. I'm not a pied-ferried attorney, I'm not a fancy-talking person from Atlanta. I live on Nelson Road for 44 years. None of these people that's been up here yet has lived in Millidgeville, they, or in our neighborhood. They don't know it. They don't know our neighborhood. Let's get to the Greenway bit. That was the first issue on the zoning board the last time it came up. We're going to give you 20 acres of land along the river if you vote for us. Well, that's fine. We have not a bit of problem with the Greenway. We support the Greenway, but they're not giving them anything. That package of land is costing, what, $200,000? 25% of it is going to be given to the Greenway? That's a tax exemption of $50,000 bucks? That's nothing about giving it away. If Tomlin wanted to give it away to him, he could have given it to him years ago, years We don't care if you move the Greenway all the way to Dublin. Let's even do better. Let's be Sherman and march to the sea. It's not an issue. The issue is the project itself. Now let's go back to this zoning board. On the zoning board, we had Mr. Grant as the chairman. His brother lives on Nelson Road. He was gentleman enough to exempt himself from voting. As a result, we had a five-man board, two, Mr. Brokens and Mr. Driscoll voted against it. They're live proximal to our or in our district. They understood what our problem was. We had three that voted against it. Before this zoning board came up for our area, there was a board met for Dole's Boulevard to rezone. And that was turned down. And it was turned down because there was no emergency interest, there was not enough traffic and so forth to provide for, plus Mr. Hobbs, who lives on the corner of Jefferson and Montgomery, didn't want all those cars coming up of Dole's Boulevard into his backyard. So he voted no. And so did the rest of the board. They understood that no, there was not adequate traffic solution for emergency vehicles or anyone else. Let's look at the next person on this list. Next person on this list, Mr. Hobbs said no, goodness gracious. Gus Persley, Mr. Persley, Gus Persley, owner of Fowler-Flemster Concrete. How many thousands upon thousands of dollars does Mr. Persley put in his pocket from concrete sidewalks, concrete curves, concrete foundations, cement blocks and all the paving equipment that goes along with it? Now, this is your piece of paper, not mine. It says right there, conflict of interest, right there. And it says, has a financial interest in business, right there, your paper. The other person on that board was Mr. Taylor. Goodness gracious. It's been brought to our attention that Mr. Taylor is an employee of Fowler-Flemster Concrete. This whole thing stinks like a bucket of dirty diapers. Now, let us get to the next problem we have here. And that's the project itself. You're just talking about jobs. Yeah, jobs for a year to build this thing. After that, there's no more jobs. There's no more. Taxes, we all pay taxes. I've paid $100,000 in taxes since I've lived there. They're not the only people paying taxes. Project said the zoning change had been to townhouses in 2002. Now why is it that 12 years later, there's still nothing over there? I ask you, why? 12 years before we get somebody to come up with this kind of a project? In the floodplain. Gentlemen from Atlanta sitting here talking about Auburn. God, that is a vile nasty word down here. We're Georgia Bulldogs. Auburn. The plains of Auburn is not the floodplains of Millidgeville. It is not. That's a whole different ballgame. Kennesaw, that's a different area too. That has nothing to do with us. You look around town, there's plenty of housing available for students. Up and down, there's every street around, every place. The college is considering making students stay in dorms through sophomore year. Why? Because they can't fill the dormitories that the taxpayers have already paid for over I don't know. Don't make sense to me. 500 bedrooms, 500 bedrooms. And the ordinance says there has to be a car for guest parking. We're talking about 600 cars, 600 cars in this little piece of land up there with one road. And the man, you better go back and measure it. It's 15 feet, 6 inches. That's how wide that road is. And I live on it, I know, and I measured it. Don't come over here and tell me about my li, my, my neighborhood. You haven't been there. 600 cars. Now, does that mean we're going to widen the streets? Are you going down there and tear the front yards off all these people that live along there, up and down Underwood? And who's going to pay for that? And who's going to pay to move all the sewer lines and the gas lines and the water lines and the power poles and all the other lines that go with it? Cable TV and all this other stuff. Who's going to pay for all that? They don't own the property. They're not the ones that's going to have to compensate and do that. Says here that he could not, he, he admitted a minute ago, that he could, maybe could not fill the place with students. I, I accept that, yeah. What do you think I am, an idiot? Insult my intelligence? The federal law says if a red-ass baboon wants to rent an apartment over there, they've got to rent it to him.
Watch your language, sir.
I'm sorry. But it's true.
Understood.
Now, you talk about student housing. I'll show you student housing. I'm going to give this to Mrs. Walton and let her decide. But there's a notice, student housing live next door. And take a look at this. Notice the poison ivy growing up the tree, up the house. Notice how the kids have driven through the, the yards and parallel parked on the driveway instead of using the as a driveway.
Would you move that microphone back to you? I'm sure they want to hear you outside.
All right. Notice the weeds and trees and all the trash that's grown up in that place and that the city had to go back out there and tell them, hey, clean it up. Now who owns that? Eggers. Now isn't that a familiar name? Eggers. A brother. Andy, he lives in Atlanta. The rent money goes to Atlanta, it doesn't stay in Millidgeville. It goes to Atlanta. Every, every dime of it. By the same token, the rent money for this project here, it's not going to stay here. It goes to Atlanta, these, these guys in Atlanta. They're the ones that line their pocket. You're not going to get that. How much are they going to spend downtown? Kids don't go down to Grants and spend watches and stuff in the jewelry store. They don't go buy nuts and bolts over at Ace Hardware. They don't. Where do they go? They go down to the, for a better word, saloon downtown and buy a pizza. And you can't even find a place to park downtown, regardless of when you go. I don't know. It, it just seems to me, and seems to us, that the people in this community that have lived there forever and ever don't deserve this. Now, we're not against, we're not against student housing. Not that, no, 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 no. There's other sites. There's sites here in Millidgeville that are available for this. There's one out on Dunlap Road. It's got almost 70 acres in it. It's already zoned. It's near a fire station. It's not far from the water tank. They have complete access out on Dunlap to Hatcher Square, Walmart, all the restaurants up and down Columbia. There's a site for it. And there's also a site out on 22, I don't know what that, that'd have to rezoned it, I'm sure. But the taxpayers already paid to have 46 acres leveled out there by Triumph Aircraft. Now I don't know what that means, but I do know that we paid to have that done. And they've already said that 46 acres wasn't large enough for the, an industrial project. I don't know. All this money's going to go to Atlanta. It's not going to go here. It, it just seems that must, that, that the whole thing hasn't been adequately thought through and especially the business with the housing, I mean, the, the traffic. Nelson Road's 15 feet wide and there's no way with Freedom Church, when 100 cars going into Freedom Church, they're already parking out on Nelson Road. There's no way that this is going to possibly work, have 600 cars coming in and then have a tragedy in there. And how are you going to get emergency equipment in there? You guys, we need, we need to rethink this. We're not opposed to a project, we're opposed to this project. And I think the council needs to stop and consider it very, very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members, my neighbors and my fellow community members, I would ask before I make my comments, I'll try to make them as short as I can.
Name and address.
My name is Jan Clark. I live at 800 Nelson Road in Millidgeville. I've lived there since 2003 and I teach at Georgia College. And is it okay, can we turn this around?
Yes.
The community has never seen any of this. We had, we didn't get to see it at the planning and zoning meeting. No one got to see this, other than the planning and zoning members. Actually, I don't think they saw it either when they had that meeting. So maybe you can figure out from looking at it what, what we weren't able to see before. I so appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the rezoning application for 700 Nelson Road. I, I trust that you will listen with an open mind. And I know that this decision is about comparing pros and cons of, of this request. And I know you have to ask yourself, is there a compelling need? How, how are all the stakeholders affected? Are they fairly represented? Who gains, who's harmed? What are the short and long-term costs and benefits? And I know that you will ultimately do your best to make a good decision because your stewards are the present and the future well-being of this town that we all love and we all claim as our home. I, I have to take first, I, I just, Mr. Mr. Howie's claims about the need here, I don't think have been adequately met, okay? He hasn't provided any data that there's a need or market for a 500-bedroom student housing complex here in Millidgeville. First of all, there's not going to be significant growth at either college, okay? That's been well established. We have more than enough student housing available that is going unsold. So in a way, it feels like we're robbing the in-town Peter to pay the out-of-town Paul when we add this to the mix. I also, I also- I also, I also take exception to the notion that we don't have the kind of amenities that you're saying your project will provide. The Kid Center just opened, it's a pretty amazing place. The Wellness Center at Georgia College is a pretty amazing place. We have a student center that has plenty of room for students to meet. We have plenty of Greek housing. You may know that we have, you know, on Columbia and Liberty Street, we have, we have a number of Greek housing, houses that are now housing fraternities and sororities that are meeting their needs. So, again, I don't see any proof that we have a need here. Because this is not Tuscaloosa, Alabama. And I think more needs to be done there. Of course, I have to add the most obvious one. Every homeowner living in this established community of working folks, we are working folks. We get up at six o'clock. We're nurses, and we are plumbers, and we are teachers, and we are childcare workers. And we come home at five o'clock, and we go to bed at ten or eleven. And basically, being right next to the proposed student housing complex, every single one of us is opposed to us. And in all honesty, my good friend that lives on Water's Edge, and all of you, I think if you apply the golden rule that you have to agree that if someone proposed to you that they wanted to move six hundred unsupervised eighteen to twenty-four year olds next door to you, you would find it hard to support. I just kinda want you to think about that, all right? I love college students. I love them platonically and appropriately, all right? And I've been teaching them since nineteen seventy-eight. And I was one once. It's an uncontestable fact that six hundred college age students make terrible neighbors. They make terrible neighbors for the people that live in our area. And they're gonna be terrible neighbors to the Greenway, okay? Which they're gonna be directly, you know, directly next to, okay? If you haven't already seen the property as it is, you gotta look at what that land looks like. It's not just any fifty-four acres. It's a beautiful and fragile ecosystem, and it lies right between the river and South Albert Street. This fifty-four acres is home to at least eight pairs of endangered piliated woodpeckers, at least four pairs of barred owls, forty wild turkeys. And now, you're probably rolling your eyes and saying, I bet she's a card carrying member of PETA. But I'm not. I do belong to the Audubon Society, though, okay? And you may know my father-in-law, Bobby Peoples, who writes an outdoor column for the Union Recorder. And he tells us that those turkeys are very endangered, okay? That live in that, in that little fifty-four acres. As well as the red and gray fox, the songbirds, and of course, the deer. I guess I just wanna remind you that not all developments are equal. This one is going to leave a huge footprint. It is going to destroy a lot of habitat that we're not gonna get back, okay? Six hundred parking spaces of concrete. I just want, six hundred parking spaces of concrete. That's gonna elevate the temperature fairly significantly, okay? With the heat coming up there, in this very fragile ecosystem. We already know the parking lot will be underwater several times a year. And that proposed upper road, you know, the emergency road, that's gonna turn a four-way stop into a five-way stop. And I don't think there's a traffic engineer in the world who would approve that configuration, okay? If you let them open that road up, I wanna remind you of this. You know, the emergency point is incredibly important. Because if you open that upper road up, you're gonna turn every single house on Underwood Road. If you look at this, it's going to end up being the driveway for six hundred eighteen to twenty-four year olds driving up and down several times a day and night. They get up at two in the afternoon, they go to home at four in the morning. The trolley, not gonna work. Do you think they're gonna keep the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit? I don't think so. Do you think they're gonna be looking out for the adults and children who bicycle up and down that road? And I wanna close with saying, we all want to make Millageville an attractive and an affordable place to live. I wanna reiterate the fact that none of us are against development. It's this development, okay? I believe that the present zoning is much more of an asset. And it's gonna bring far more benefits and far less cost than this planned development will. Because college students don't pay taxes, they don't vote, they don't buy permits or tags here. You know, when we get that hospital repurposed, when we get that community university going down the south side, the townhomes next to the Greenway for the young folks that we wanna keep here and raise their families here after they've been college students. And the retirees that come here, that do belong to the Audubon Society, and you know, like to see all of the wildlife on the Greenway. Those are the people that wanna kayak, you know? And they want that access. And they're gonna be incredibly great assets. That's what we need, and that's already zoned. It's zoned for that kind of community that all of, you know, a lot of different kinds of folks can utilize. A student housing project, in which I have to remind you of this, eighty-four of the one hundred and twenty-four units in this housing project have four to six bedrooms in them. Eighty-four out of one hundred and twenty-four, four to six bedrooms. I don't know who else would wanna live in that configuration. I believe that the developers also do a great disservice to our students. Our students wanna live in houses that leave a small energy footprint. They wanna live in houses and housing that represent the values of conservation and sustainability. That's what we're teaching them in schools, and that's what they're learning about, how to lead in the future. And that the things that the Kid Center and the Wellness Center really represent. And this is the opposite of that. We know that Dan Tomlin and the Atlanta developers will make a lot of money out of us. The rest of us stand to lose much more than we gain in the short and the long run. So, again, my friend who lives on Water's Edge, I will disagree with your assessment of how much economic boom there's going to be from this. The Oconee Greenway cannot thrive if its flank is stripped. And by this kind of housing project. I think we have an opportunity to make something good and balanced happen. And I think that the present zoning with townhomes can do that. I don't think that this proposed development will help any of us. And I thank you very much for your time and your attention and for listening to me.
Anyone else in opposition? Yes. Yes. I didn't see you. You'll have time, though, Tracy.
Mr. Mayor, it gives me a privilege again to get to be with you. And I enjoyed my conference with you. Although I probably have different feelings about some things. I've had a little bit more time to do some reviewing and studying. And I'd like to compliment this gentleman group again for the work they've done to orchestrate a good picture. I also dug some work with it, and I got the names of the planning, zoning people that I worked with and their phone numbers. I have called one man seven times, don't get no response. I have seen him here three or four times during a couple of years. And I've been, well, I've been there a long time before that. But anyway, I don't know what's happened. And I talked to Ms. Graham about this, and she tells me that he has some problems with his wife. I understand that. I've been there and done that too. Now, to make a preference of what I'm here for, since we've had a demonstration of this, I'd like to do my demonstration, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to open up my statement by saying, this is what you people have seen. And it's a piece of paper.
Turn it up, turn it, turn it around there, Mr. Perkins. You got it upside down.
I got it upside down. But in this, I have looked in, I've been and done my homework. If I'm gonna be a part of something, I'm gonna do my part to this and I know my capabilities are, even though I have limitations. But, there's one reason to be enforced with the ingenuity of having the privilege of being with people if you're concerned about. And from that, I look back and made some things that I thought were very interesting. If I can get it open.
Mr. Perkins, we can't hear you unless you're speaking to the microphone. We can't hear you unless you're speaking to the microphone.
The microphone is only for the television.
I sit over there, and I hear the same thing as what you're hearing. But in that, I've looked through this very carefully, and I've underlined some things that bothers me. And I mentioned that to you people when you were here before. Now, I had some more things I wanted to ask, but by the chair running solely in evening, I was not able to do that. I did get my answer, but it was later and not in four. So, with this, I'd like to conclude what I say and give my extra time to Ms. Jeanette Walton, Ms. Griffin, Mr. Richard Appleberry, and anybody else that has some conclusion about how we feel about this thing. And from that, I'm not here for pity. I worked forty-two years in mental health. I started off working for two, sixty dollars a month. Long time. But thank God, he led me through some very troubling time. And my wife and I was able to save a little bit of money to get a house to live in. And later on, I outgrew that little two before. And I built a place where I thought I was gonna be comfortable, with good neighborhoods. I didn't have fire protection where I used to live. I have fire protection now. I have police protection. And to say it lightly, I didn't be a pretty good candidate on calling the police. And I used to have to wait twenty-seven minutes to get a answer. But thank God, he took care of that, and I don't have to wait about five minutes now.
Good.
That's a plus. So, with that, I'm gonna have my seat and hope for the best.
Thank you.
But I do remember what you told me, how you was going to vote and why you was going to vote.
I didn't say how I was gonna vote, I said I would consider it.
Well, you were in the same community where I live, so you've been there too. So, no more to say, it's in your court.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're being very assertive there. Tracy? If you would turn that microphone, we have demonstrative people.
My name is Tracy Grant. I live at seven sixty-one Nelson Road. And I just have a couple of things I'd like to address. First of all, he says, the builder says they have one of these communities at Auburn. Is there another one at Kennesaw? Okay, Kennesaw and Auburn both have twenty-four thousand students. Georgia College has six thousand. There's a huge difference in twenty-four thousand and six thousand. I don't know how they're gonna fill five hundred bedrooms with only these six thousand students. My other concern is that I was under the, I was under the impression that anything that the planning and zoning approved had to be as is, there could be no changes. Is that correct?
After it's brought up, yes.
Okay, there have, there have been, there have been changes. These are not the same things that they told us in the Planning and Zoning Committee. There are some things that are different. For example, they told us there'd be a twenty acre buffer coming to Nelson Road tonight. He says ten. There are several other things that he's addressed that were not addressed in the planning and zoning the same way. So, to me, it seems like they've made some changes, they're trying to pull a little something over here. That was just my understanding. The traffic study, they, yes, sir.
The Planning and Zoning is an advisory committee.
Yes, sir.
Anything can be changed between the Planning and Zoning and coming to.
All right, that's my misunderstanding.
Here, this body can decide to either table something, send it back to Planning and Zoning. But the ultimate decision as far as amending our zoning orders, which is in fact what this does, lies with this body.
Okay, that's my misunderstanding.
And that was my point, it can be changed here.
Okay. The traffic study, what kind of traffic study was there? I thought when you did a traffic study, there was a computer, and you had a line across the road. So, people, I mean, that's one kind of traffic study. I've not seen any of that, and I live on Nelson Road and go that way every day.
Our engineer has spoken to that.
Sir?
I just wanted to take here one, and I've read it today, and it's, and basically, a lot of information comes. Excuse me, I keep forgetting about my microphone, but. A lot of the information comes from the state of Georgia. You have a state route, which is, what is this, one-twelve, I think, what Albert Street is. And, you know, some of that information, according to the study, comes from that. They also look at, they looked at the peak hours. And the peak hours are for what I would consider normal people. They're eight to nine and five to six. And, but what I see also in that point is that students, and I employ quite a few and have over the years, that they come, they don't, they don't all go at once. Not all of them get up and go at eight o'clock, and not all of them are gonna necessarily come home at five. But, you know, and I, you can look at that as a consideration of heavy traffic, but to me, it seems, you know, more a consideration of thinning out. Also in this is the, is also part of the study is what kind of impact this would make upon it, and then how it grades out. But we were provided with this, so we had an opportunity to be able to read it.
This information that we were provided with was provided to us from the developer. It wasn't anything that was done by the city.
By the developer, they just took what the state of Georgia had and put it together.
Well, whatever they, whatever they did, it was not a study that was done by the city.
Okay.
We have a staff that would maybe be able to do that, but that didn't happen.
There are other people that have, those were my major concerns right there, that there were things that had been changed. And the number of students at Georgia Colleges does not anywhere equal Kennesaw or Auburn. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Iva Griffin, and I live at four forty Underwood Road. And I'm gonna try to skip through what's already been touched on tonight. You have made several, you have made several addresses to things that were concerned at the zoning meeting. You haven't made mention of the noise. You, you know, you had explained to us at the zoning meeting that there would be two hundred feet of trees. But we had several people to speak that night that GMC ball fields are much further than two hundred feet, and we hear ball games and band practice and this kind of thing. So, what further studies have you done on the noise? I have a proposal. You go down the interstate, and what happens when you get close to a neighborhood beside the interstate? You start seeing this big old tall fence wall, solid wall. Why is it there? It's there to buffer the noise from the neighborhood of the traffic. So, could you do that for us? That would buffer the noise.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you wanna get close to Ms. Griffin, but we do need to.
I'm not against development, I just wanna make sure.
One of the reasons, I live almost a quarter of a mile from the local high school where I live in Atlanta. We hear the same thing. That's a long ways away, much further than this. But the reason why is that those activities take place in the stadium, and it amplifies the sound. And so, I think that's what everyone's hearing. If you go out into just a residential community and you have a party on the weekend, and somebody breaks out a van, you may hear a little bit. But the amount of acreage and trees is, we're not gonna touch any of the trees between any of the community existing.
But Sam goes through trees. I had to put a, a security, I had to put up a wooden fence in front of my chain link fence for my daycare to buffer the noise of my children in the neighborhood. So, you don't think you need to put up a wall and then have those two hundred feet of trees to buffer it from my neighborhood? I mean, they had a fit about my kids making noise, and I had twelve kids. And you got five hundred college students.
I do, I do.
And I make more noise than my kids. So, is the wall something we couldn't ask for? Is it something you wouldn't tell this council that you would do? To be sure that the noise is buffered?
I've never seen a noise wall other than on an interstate, and we don't, we don't have.
But why is it on the interstate?
For road noise. We don't have that.
To keep the road noise away from?
But we don't have road noise.
The neighborhood. I'm the neighborhood. A lot of us hear the neighborhood. So, I still say, you know, the noise, it came through my chain link fence. So I still say, you know, the noise, it came through my chain link fence. I had trees in my yard, but I had to build a six-foot wooden fence to buffer the noise in the neighborhood to...
Yes. We do have a six-foot wooden fence going down that entire property line because we're gated, gated community. So there is a fence that goes around the property.
And is it gonna be, it's gonna be wooden?
It'll be solid wood.
So you would not consider putting up a fence like the interstate has to have? Would you consider asking him to do that? Because I'm sure there's some law or ruling somewhere where so many feet before the, when you're going down the interstate, so many feet before you get to the, the residential area, the fence has to start. I'm sure so many feet past it, it has to get stopped. Because they don't wanna hear all that car. I'm the mother of a college student. They party Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So don't just tell me it's gonna be Friday and Saturday. And they wind down about midnight on Sunday. And I agree that they do come and go all times of the day. But you got five hundred cars coming and going, off and on, all day. They got an eight o'clock class, they go, they come back. Oh, they got a, a twelve o'clock class, so they're going, same cars going again. So when you consider that, you're gonna have constant going and coming, constant. So, um, I ask you to address this noise issue because it was at the, um, zoning meeting. And I do think, I, I talked to some people about the, 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 uh, wall, and they said that, uh, Scott might can answer it. Engineers would know, uh, what type of wall this is. You know, when you go toward Atlanta, you'll see fence, and then all of a sudden, you don't see any fence, and then all of a sudden, you see fence. It's always where there's a neighborhood. So we're not asking any more than, than has already been asked to, to buffer noise from traffic. Uh, now, there are gonna be four, five, and six bedrooms, right? Because I've only heard you mention three bedrooms and some fours, but there are five and six bedrooms. So you're going against your ordinance that you've already set up and that you've already established. So if, if you left it at the present zoning and let them build a really nice townhouse community, they can get the same thing they're asking for. They just wouldn't have five hundred bedrooms. And they wouldn't go against your ordinance and have more than three in a unit. We welcome that. It's already zoned for that. But now, it's more. And I believe he said he specialized in student housing. I don't believe there's a need for student housing, but someone else is going to address that. Um, is Marvin still here? I have a question, Marvin. Feet of easement right-of-way, is this the all of Pumping Station Road?
Yes, ma'am.
So Mr. Tomlin doesn't own Pumping Station Road like Mr. Armstrong told me?
He does, he does.
That's the whip.
The city easement does not mean ownership. City has the right to use Mr. Tomlin's property.
Okay, do you have a right to use other people's property?
If I have an easement, then I would, but I would own the property. So I don't need an easement, and I would have the right to be wherever you would.
So it doesn't matter that Chester Gumby owns four hundred-plus feet coming into Underwood Road on the left side, and Freedom Church owns a thousand one hundred and twenty-five-plus feet on the right side. You could still take where their property lines are and make it as wide as you want it, up to eighty feet.
Correct.
You don't have to get permission from the city to do that. Okay? Because I don't know the legal aspect. So I wanted to get that clarified. So the ladder truck, in case of fire, we wanna make sure the ladder, the big ladder truck can get in on Pumping Station, and if it's flooded, get in on Nelson. Would you make sure that that can happen? Okay. And since they brought in the Greenway and the, and the friendly biker thing, which I'm very much in favor of and, and go along with one hundred percent, but I do know, I do know you're on the board at the Greenway, so we don't want a conflict of interest.
Yes.
You are vice president, Mr. Reynolds.
Of, of the foundation, not the authority.
Okay.
Mr. Claire.
And you were treasurer, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. We just don't want, uh, any conflict of interest. We want you to make sure you listen to both sides. Okay?
My position is created by their authority.
Okay.
The mayor sits there, as does the commission chair.
Okay. And, um...
I'd be more than happy to acquiesce to someone else.
Mr. Johnson stated, and I'll quote from the minutes, "When I asked him at the zoning meeting about this parking area that was going to flood, and I said, 'How do you propose to get the cars out, you know, when, when there's a flood?'" And this is his reply. "If they were in the parking lot, they'd just be underwater." Now, that was his quote from the zoning meeting. So have you changed your mind, Scott? Please tell me you have.
Well, I, um, I, I, I can't change the laws of physics. If they're in a flood zone and there's a flood and there are cars in, in that parking lot, the cars will flood. Um, that's not my opinion.
Okay. But you said if they were there, they would be underwater. That, that was your quote.
If the water's, well, it was taller than the cars, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Griffin, give me just a moment. Uh, Mr. Howie, would, would you answer this question? I think that's what she's getting to, or, or since you have a manager on site, are you gonna make a concerted effort to notify these people once you understand that there will be some flooding problems to get those cars out of there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, what if they are gone with somebody else and their car's sitting there and nobody's got a key to it? How are you gonna handle all this? I mean, come up with a plan that those cars, I wouldn't want my college student's car flooded. Would you want yours?
No, ma'am, but...
Okay, thank you.
This is one, this, this is one parking lot in this development.
How many parking spaces in that flooded area?
There's certain tow cars, right?
We need to find out how many cars we're talking about. Okay, the unit recorded December twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, five months ago, almost. This was made by the unit recorder. Just so that you have an idea of what we look at. Look at the stop sign on Pumping Station. Look at the Freedom Church sign. You barely see the top of it. This was December twenty-ninth, less than five months ago. Let me see. I really wish they, I love the Greenway and I love the bike thing, and I wish they hadn't have made this such an issue on trying to get this development through because that was, that was not, that should not have even been involved in what's going on. So I, I'm just gonna close with saying that, uh, I have a quote that, uh, the, in their studies, that the general at GMC on two different occasions, they understand where that particular college is headed, and based on that, they have a market study firm do a study based on, I'm assuming, what the general told you? That's what you quoted in the zoning meeting is saying. Okay, well, I got the minutes here anyway. I wanna know, why was the general of GMC not there to back up his word?
Which general?
Yeah, which general? You never said, you just said general. Well, he's not the general.
Uh, he is a general.
He's a general, but he's not the general of GMC anymore.
At the time that I met with him, we started this project over a year ago.
Okay. So you don't think you need to bring your stuff up to date like we have to bring ours up to date?
We, we, we've asked for a meeting.
Okay, and have you met with him? Okay, okay. So you don't know how he feels. We got the chairman of, of the board at GMC here tonight, so maybe he can answer some of those questions for you. Okay. Police have no trouble getting in. Medical won't. Make sure the ladder can get in. I hate for a big fire to come on back there and the place to be flooded and they can't get in Nelson. And I wanna know they can get in Pumping Station. Um, Greenway opened up onto Nelson Road. Do you wanna open up the Greenway in a residential area? You said you were gonna open up the Greenway into Nelson Road. Did I misunderstand that?
In the last meeting that we had, one of the recommendations that you had was that you would like to see a bike path in Nelson Road.
I didn't, not me, not me. Okay.
One of the, one of the audience members said they would like to see that. And we incorporated all of the comments into that. If the council would like to remove that, if you do that, I have no problem. One way or the other, we're trying to accommodate what the community would like.
Well, I believe that the Greenway is a wonderful thing. But I believe if you allow them to open up a bike path onto Nelson Road from the Greenway, you're going to see kids ten to fifteen years old from the other neighborhoods, two and three neighborhoods over from us, walking or riding in the streets, putting a hazard on the neighborhood streets trying to get to that Greenway. Because they're gonna figure out, you know kids are gonna figure out where that opening is. So I say to you, don't let it come into Nelson Road. Let us go down and come in just like all of you did. We don't have a problem with that. You know, let, let us go in, because there's some things that go on down there. You don't need another path to sneak in there. And your development's gonna be opened up to it, so y'all are gonna be able to get in there anyway. So, I mean, I, I just don't see that our neighborhood needs that opening. So I'd ask you to make sure that, that that doesn't happen, okay? And I think I'm going to let someone else address the other issues, because y'all, y'all did the flooding and everything. I do have a list of, of the, the major concerns that, um, everyone had. And when I find them, I'm gonna give them to you. And I'll just let you take a look at the concerns. And one of these was just to close the, the Greenway so that, you know, we wouldn't... I just don't wanna put kids in danger, because face it, parents either go to work and leave them home by themselves. They're not supposed to, but they do. Or they just don't supervise them. And kids are roaming, and when school is out, kids are roaming up and down Underwood Road and, and in the, the neighborhoods over from us. And I'm a sort of friend that if we open up the Greenway, it's just gonna give them away to get in. And they're not gonna be supervised, and somebody's got to be responsible.
Finally.
My name is Randy New. I live at four forty-five Underwood Road. I'm gonna move as long as, as fast as I can, because I know Dan's probably gotta pay his employees overtime to be in here, take up seats, and probably gotta pay his friends to come. Uh, I got a couple of questions. The easement, six foot on Pumping Station?
Eighty.
Eighty feet? What is the difference in an easement and a right-of-way? Do you have the same ability to take and build in an easement as you do a right-of-way?
First of all, the city has an easement.
Hmm?
Dan owns the property.
Correct.
For the right-of-way, the city has a right to the property. And the owner cannot make improvements in that. With an easement, the owner is granting access to the person that is asking for the easement and can make improvements in that area.
All eighty feet?
And all eighty...
Easier than a right-of-way? It's easier to build in a right-of-way?
It's different than a right-of-way. Totally different than a right-of-way. Right-of-way that the city owns, the easement Dan owns.
Well, you're telling me you could put up fruit stand on both sides of that road?
You can do anything without the city's knowledge and...
But I mean, you can put anything you want to there.
Do you want to do that? Well, I mean, what the city has is an eighty-foot easement going from Underwood Road to the Pumping Station. We got that, that was actually, the Georgia Building Authority got that in nineteen sixty-nine.
And does that include, uh, Gumby's and the church's property? That sixty-foot easement's on theirs, too?
Eighty-foot easement.
Eighty-foot easement's on theirs, too?
I don't know whose property it's on. We, we have the easement.
Does it start at Underwood Road and go?
It goes from Underwood Road all the way to the Pumping Station.
So your answer would be it covers all of Pumping Station Road?
Correct. What they are asking the city to approve is relocating a portion of the easement, uh, because they're routing, apparently they're routing it around one of their buildings according to this plan.
Okay. The, uh... I just to show you how big a dog I got in this fight. I live right there. Pumping Station, Underwood, Nelson, what we've been talking about. Me and my brother-in-law own twenty-five pieces of property, within seven hundred fifty yards of that spot right there. I'm the guy who's been at my church, waiting for twenty twenty to the morning. In my den, last night, we had a real big flood. So I got a bunch of dogs in this fight. I'll go back and start with the GMC issue that came up at planning and zoning that I would've probably got arrested for trying to push department out of the way to get in here if I'd have heard it. I've been chairman of GMC Board of Trustees since nineteen ninety-eight. We not ever and won't ever, in anybody's lifetime in this room, be a four-year college. We were allowed by the Board of Regents and the Georgia Legislature to grant one four-year degree, a four-year degree in applied science. It piggybacks with a degree from the Central Georgia Technical College and allows a kid to have a degree in supervision and management, one four-year degree. That's all it's gonna be. We had to sign, General Caldwell, had to sign a piece of paper saying we would not seek a four-year status at any time in order for the Board of Regents to sign off on us doing that one four-year degree. We are, the GMC's looking over the next fifteen years to probably increase our student population. It'll be probably a lot of foreign students by somewhere in an eighty to ninety to a hundred student, eighty to ninety to a hundred, that's all, students. We are already in negotiation with some private developers adjacent to campus. We have two spots that we own on campus that one of those three options will be where we put those eighty to a hundred students. We'll have no need for any outside housing in the future. I did a survey with the aid of, uh, Melissa Hinden, I believe. Melissa's right here. She manages the Bellamy. She does a student beds, bed survey, I think she's at every Tuesday. And finds out how many beds are available, who's got two bedrooms, who's got three bedrooms, who's got two bedrooms, two beds. So that if somebody comes in and you hadn't got what they need, you can send them somewhere else. Between that and the size downtown on the historic buildings that are college-oriented housing, there's somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred college beds available right now. That means a hundred and fifty or two hundred college students shut up tomorrow, they could find somewhere to put their head down before the sun fell. The economics of a new housing, student housing complex, or, you know, if the man does his job and it sounds like he will, I hope he don't get to do it here. Uh, you got something shiny, you got something new, you got something different. You're gonna draw some students away. Well, you go right down here on Hall Street, which is a cross street between Jefferson and Wilkerson, you'll see a boarded-up student housing project that Carl Cheeley built down there about fifteen years ago. I mean, economics drove that thing into foreclosure. Do we want five hundred beds coming into this economy? The ones that are on the brink, the ones that have a lot of vacancies? Is it gonna push them over there? They're gonna be foreclosed, they're gonna be shuttered. What, what are we looking at? It's a very possible thing that could happen. Steve's traffic survey, I feel sure, because they don't have a crystal ball, and we don't either, says what's going on now. Well, we had five to six hundred cars to traffic on Underwood Road. And I sit there and watch the traffic over the church. Of course, it's Sunday morning, Sunday night, Wednesday night, funerals, uh, plays they have, weddings. When they come out and get up to Albert Street, if one person tries to turn left to go straight, you back the traffic all the way back up Pumping Station Road. That's a couple hundred cars. Add five or six hundred of that. I would feel sure that DLT, when they came down, or if they were setting up plans saying what was gonna happen back here with this one road coming out and this one road going to Albert Street, would say traffic light. Well, from what I've heard, that's four hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. I don't feel like the city's got the money to do that. I don't think this development would have a profit margin that would allow them to do that. But I, but I feel DLT would say, "You can't do this. You can't pile that many cars and that many times a day onto this road without a traffic device." I'd like to remind all of you, and by the way, thank you for your service. Sometimes this is a thankless job, this may be one of those nights. You represent your district constituents and the city of Menesville as a whole. Would you want this in your district? Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Mullins, Mr. Chambers, Ms. Shinhorst, Dr. Lee? Would you want this in your district if it was similarly put together? I don't have to ask Ms. Walden, I know her answer. I don't have to ask Ms. Walden, I know her answer.
District four is pretty full of student housing as it is.
Oh, yeah, you might, you might be exempt because you've got so many already. I'll remind you too, that planning and zoning, the vote you got from them was a recommendation and a recommendation only. You're free to vote what your heart says you need to do for the good of this city. Don't look six months down the road, look six years down the road. Think about what, how this is gonna affect our neighborhood. And like I said earlier, I know, I know floods, believe me, but before I married into the family that built that house, my father-in-law built that house, I had to have him haul wet carpet and padding and fix the floor and fix the walls, and I've had to do it myself, my choice. I love my house, I'm not moving, not going anywhere. And, and you saw the pictures that Ms. Griffin put out. Now, I'll address this to Scott. Uh, I, I know this from, we had a complaint filed against us when we were building the GMC baseball field, I think all y'all know what that is. And tell me if I'm wrong, if, if this room was a flood basin and you came over here and you put, took four feet of it, put a wall up, did something to change four feet of it, you gotta go somewhere else and you get gray four feet. Okay, I wanted to make that sure. So when we go to raising roads, and, and another thing, I don't care how high you raise Pumping Station Road, it's never gonna be above, it's never gonna be above Underwood, which is gonna be the problem getting in there. You go to raising roads and putting dirt and getting out like that, when the core engineers come in and say, okay, you've done ten thousand cubic feet of dirt here, we gotta, you gotta show me where you kept this flood basin the same. It cost us five grand, it cost GMC five grand to get somebody to come in there and monitor that and make sure when we got through, the flood, flood basin was the same. Uh, that's all I got, ladies and gentlemen. I, I think you know how I feel about it, and I think, I'm... Hey, Dan, appreciate you bringing the community together too, maybe we'll all tighten it. Thank y'all.
Yes. Anyone else in opposition?
Hello, my name's Melissa Hinton. I'm the property manager at the Bellamy Student Apartments, which are located at one forty-five South Irwin Street. I'm also a resident of this community, I live at one seventy-three O'Connor Drive. Um, and I just wanted to take a moment to address the market saturation issue regarding student housing. Um, currently at this time, Georgia College has around twenty-five hundred dorm beds across the dorms and also the west campus. Um, the purpose-built student housing accounts for around fifteen hundred beds plus another, um, three ninety from College Station, and then fifteen hundred and more in what we call the shadow market, which is the rental homes and everything. So that equates for around six thousand beds right now that are in our market. So at a university that has a pop enrollment number of around sixty-two hundred, and also people that are commuting and living at home, um, and given that they are considering a second year requirement to live on campus, I would like to request for you all to consider voting no on this proposal because it will oversaturate the market once the new community is built. There is, um, I can tell you in regards personally, since I manage this community, I've been there three years. The community was at one hundred percent occupancy in year one, and every year from that, you're gonna drop a little bit. We maintain at this time around a ninety-six, ninety-seven percent occupancy, which is definitely not bad, nothing to complain about. But the farther that you get out from campus, the lower your occupancy rates are going to be. So the further you get from there, it's gonna be harder to fill those rooms because location is everything when it comes to student housing. Given that there is not a drive-by traffic potential for this community, it'd be really hard for someone to just drive by. They'd have to know that the place was there in order to be attracted to it. I think that given two to three years' time, you're gonna have a really hard time filling that with students. You're gonna have to consider other options, based on them coming in with a revenue mindset of filling it by bedroom. So I think that that's one thing to consider. I think that it will definitely pose a potential problem for that area. And then, at that time, they're gonna fill the rooms with someone, you know, it will have to be filled. So I would just like for you all to just strongly consider that because I do feel it would oversaturate the market, and it would hurt some of these other communities that are currently contributing to the local economy. And, and I did hear them make several mentions about keeping people into that community, but, you know, as businesses and as communities, we want to invest in our city. We want to encourage our residents to enjoy the things that our city offers because ultimately, we want to grow this economy locally. We want our students to shop at our downtown businesses, and we want our students to use, you know, salons and tanning beds and everything in the area. So we want to drive them to invest locally in the city. And ultimately, we want to attract people to stay in the city long-term. That's in all of our best interests, to attract people to the Millisville area. So I think that if you were looking to build in this community, there's definitely a need for a conventional community, for single-family people. I think there's a need for that because I haven't walked into my office every day. I've got a family, where can we live? There's not many options for people in that setting. So I think that something like that, there is a need for it here, but I do not feel that there is a need for more student housing in the market. Thank you, that's it. Thank you for your time, Mayor and City Council.
Anyone else in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Pam Beer, seventeen twenty-four seater Wood Road. When I attended tonight, it was just because I originally wrote the story about Mr. Tomlin's property back in two thousand two, and I wanted to hear the latest iteration. But a couple of thoughts have come to mind. First of all, I would like to ask all of you to consider the project on its own merit. Don't consider what the Greenway will get out of it, don't consider the other benefits, but does, is the project worthy on its own, offering student housing in that location? The rest of it is kinda like a bribe, in my opinion. But then I had a question for Mr. Jordan. Um, knowing that that parking lot floods, the city has knowledge that it floods. Mr. Reynolds even said, well, you know, it's only a certain number of parking spaces. If there's a flooding incident and a student's car is damaged, since the city had foreknowledge of it, does it open the city up to legal claims?
No, I don't see a theory under which that could occur. Now, anybody could file a claim against the city. We have, we have that happen all the time. But I don't know under what condition of approval that the city would be facing any liability with regard to the, to the parking area. Clearly, the developer may face some liability. Uh, but I don't know of him not to say that that shouldn't happen, but, uh, just sitting here, don't really know of anything that would be a legal cause of action.
Okay. So again, please just take the project into consideration on its own, understanding that neither college campus is planning to grow, understanding that GMC is, even if it grows, it's not planning to use, it's planning to provide its own housing, and understand that we have sufficient housing now. And what, bringing a new development in will not only do to places like the Bellamy, but will also do to your individual investors who have rental properties scattered around downtown, what it might, how it might impact them too. Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
My name's Jason Maldonado, I live at seven fifty Nelson Road. Our property directly backs up, we are next to the driveway there, want to put at Freedom Rabbit, next to the Freedom Church, okay? I own a small plumbing company here in Millisville. This is an experience I had with the, uh, water department, city of Millisville Water Department. There are homes up and down Underwood. All of these homes, my home included, forty, fifty, sixty years old. The sewer's infrastructure, forty, fifty, sixty years old. Right now, you can drive down Underwood Road, you will see two patches where the homeowner has been forced to pay for the sewer repair out in the middle of the street. Now, I've worked in Macon metro area, I've worked in Atlanta metro area. Never in, for fifteen years, nowhere have I seen that a city tell the homeowner that they have to replace a sewer into the street, to the main running down the middle of the street. This came directly from the Macon, uh, I believe Mark something. He's the, the head guy, had a meeting out on Mr. Rogers' lawn. Now, you're talking about adding six hundred vehicles up and down that road. Okay, maybe six hundred vehicles ain't gonna go up and down the road. But now you're talking adding a, a, a diesel bus shuttle going up and down that road. And if they don't go down Underwood, then they're gonna continue out Nelson the other way, sending them even further into residential, the, the road's even narrower there than it is on Underwood. The, the, you're gonna be forcing, these, these sewers are falling apart, and now you're talking about adding more to it. And then telling the homeowners, they're gonna have to pay, or they get to play in sewage in their house. That's, it's crazy, I don't understand. They say they've done these studies on, you know, the infrastructure. I'm there, I was there at, with the, the water department manager. Them telling them, hey, you're out of luck, buddy. You, Mr. Rogers, he lives on the other side of the, the Freedom Church driveway. He was one who had to do it. There's another one, three, four houses up. The si, the sewers are deteriorating, and now you're talking about adding all this extra traffic and diesel trucks on top of it, or diesel shuttles. Um, as far as the bicycle path coming out, that would be coming out in my backyard. I have a garden directly next to where they're talking. You're, the, the bicycle path, you, all these people gotta get from South Elbert Street to this bicycle path. There's already pedestrian traffic there now, just people walking from the back of the neighborhood, they walk down our road. Now you're talking about getting people on bicycles to this bicycle path in the middle of the neighborhood. The roads aren't big, they're, they're not, it's, it's too much. I mean, we're there, that's our neighborhood. Um, that's, that's really it. I mean, I just know the infrastructure of the sewers is deteriorating. The, the, Millisville Water Department does not care. They say something, oh, it voted it back in. I have never seen that, and I've worked in all the major, major metro areas in Georgia. Never seen this, and they tell these homeowners, it's their responsibility. We ain't doing a damn thing, or you get, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I saw one thing I forgot in my notes, and I imagine Mr. Jared will have to maybe research this. But, uh, what is the, I lost my train of thought. The, uh...
Water pressure?
No, the major, they marked them a years, years back, when you were still, uh, the major water and sewer lines from CSH run through and close to my house somewhere in there. I think they run up there behind my house, and they come down somewhere. That needs to be addressed in here somewhere too. Do you know exactly where they run as according to this project? Is it gonna be a problem? Case closed.
Anyone else in opposition? Yes, sir.
Someone on Nelson Road has to speak for them.
Yes, sir.
And I do sympathize with these people, particularly...
We know who you are, but if you would give you a name...
I'm John Alton, I live on two-two-one South Liberty Street here in Millisville. Um, it has been demonstrated by most of the neighbors that there is a flood pain problem. There is no need for additional student housing, I think that's very evident so far. Uh, and those of you who have been college students, some more recently than others, understand that these guys don't really understand the mentality of college students. There is traffic all day, I live among them. Unfortunately, I do live among them and have for a while now. There is traffic all day, but the heaviest traffic, believe it or not, is from nine PM until three AM. And these, if nothing else comes out of the meeting, and you decide on a vote, one thing has come out of all of the, that have spoken before you is, they love their neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that is together, and they wanna protect their neighborhood, they wanna preserve their lifestyle. And I think if nothing else, that should be a primary consideration in your decision, other than the other things that go along with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else in opposition? Yes, sir.
As long as this goes on, it keeps bringing back memories to me. I want to allude to the gentleman talking about the Greek people coming in. Six weeks ago, I believe, we had a problem in my neighborhood that rocked my windows and my doors. We could not determine where it was coming from. I thought it was coming across from the street below me. It wasn't, it wasn't in Mr. New's property, it was further down. And the police got there pretty quick and found out where it was coming. It took them about seven minutes to find out where it was coming with four calls. And they found out it was coming from the riverway, riverway. Well, what happened, it's my understanding that they had a permit from the college to do this. But they didn't say anything about the noise containment.
Well, they don't issue permits on our property anyway.
Sorry?
They don't issue permits on that property.
Maybe I'm wrong, I'll have to ask someone to correct me about that.
They still have to adhere to the noise ordinance.
But, uh, they were doing this thing down there, and this happened at twenty minutes to twelve. It'd been going on all afternoon, and it's upsetting to our community. And I allude to what these gentlemen are saying about, uh, Greek people coming in. Yes, we'd like to have them, but they got to be the type of citizen that's gonna be a citizen instead of a nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Since there was opposition, you have a chance for rebuttal. Anyone in favor? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Alderman. My name's Robert Armstrong, my address is eight zero four Brookhaven, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Town Center Parkway, uh, in Brookhaven, Georgia. I wanted to talk about a couple of the, the, um, items that were brought up tonight and just respond to them real quickly and directly. One of our, um, neighbors was concerned about the care that students take of the occupants or the, uh, the homes that they occupy. In this case, this is gonna be a, a project that has master landscaping and maintenance, so that's not even gonna be a concern in this project. It will be well-maintained, certainly there'll be no trash, there'll be no high grass or, or, uh, anything that's left out of maintenance. Second of all, I wanna talk about buffers. The minimum buffers required for this site are probably less than seventy-five feet. We're talking about three hundred feet around the perimeter of this site. Certainly much greater than what the minimum is required. With regard to money from Atlanta, um, there is some capital equity that's being put into this project. If there's anybody that would like to participate in this project on the equity side, if you've got five hundred thousand dollars or more, we'd love to talk to you about being an equity investor in this project. Um, with regard to the impervious question that I think one of the Aldermen down here asked, less than thirty percent impervious coverage on this site. So that's a very low factor, particularly even in our single-family residential neighborhood. Uh, I'd like to point out for some people here that zoning should be based on use and not economics, although our studies show, uh, and this was a, a five-digit cost in this study, that there is enough demand to support this. The equity involved in this project is very sophisticated, as is the lenders involved in it, and you can bet that lenders aren't gonna go spend fifteen or sixteen million dollars in loan numbers and not justify it. Traffic concerns, the staff asked for a, a traffic study, we produced it with a certified traffic planner, um, and we, we got staff recommendation for approval, as well as planning commission approval. Um, there was another comment tonight about townhomes that was of good use here. The property's been zoned for townhome use for over a decade. It's never been developed. We've had the lowest interest rates in modern-day history for single-family home development. It has not been developed. I think that goes to speak for itself, that the site does not have economic viability for townhomes. Um, with regard to changes in the site plan, please keep in mind that we made in-site plan changes specifically to address concerns from people here tonight, uh, at the last meeting. Sound concerns from traffic, you know, there, there was a, a comment made about sound buffering devices used along the, the, um, the sides of interstates. We're talking about interstates where vehicles, particularly tractors and trailers and other heavy-duty equipment are traveling seventy miles an hour. I don't think anyone's gonna be doing over twenty miles an, an hour in these parking lots or the access roads. They might hit maximums. They might hit maximum speeds of thirty, but certainly not gonna create any sort of sounds that are accompanied with interstate traffic sounds. Flooding. Keep in mind that this is gonna be a permitted project, and any flooding that's gonna occur there is not gonna be because of the efforts and development on this site. There's a tremendous amount of detention requirements in your codes, and they will be met or exceeded. For a second, let's talk about traffic on Nelson Road. I think it's important to revisit the fact that when the traffic study was done, there was no consideration given to the fact that the Greenway is gonna provide connectivity for the students, either by bicycle or by foot, to the campus. And a lot of students will use that. We don't know how many, but it's certainly gonna reduce the impact on Nelson Road. Last, I wanna say this, certainly where everybody's concerned about sewer lines. In a previous meeting, there was somebody brought up a concern about water pressure. Most of the homes in this neighborhood, as it's been discussed, are fifty-five, sixty years old. There's probably a lot of these homes, and one gentleman was talking about he didn't have pressure to his house. I suspect he's got the original water lines between the street and his home. There's a lot of corrosion in his lines. He doesn't have pressure. I can tell you without a fact, our civil engineers confirmed there's just a tremendous amount of water pressure in this submarket. More specifically, I wanna talk about the sewer line that was, that one gentleman mentioned that there was concern for. We're not gonna be using the sewer line that goes along Nelson or Underwood. We're gonna be tying directly by gravity into Pumping Station pump, and will not use any of the sewer lines that are of concern from some of the neighbors. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong, I'd like to tell you something. Today, I came up and talked with the city manager about the water pressure in my district, and out of all the districts in here, for years, I have been working with him trying to get better water pressure over there in my district. It does not have the water pressure that it needs to have. Now, on that one road of Underwood Road, just a few months ago, they hooked on at Fish and Creek, and that one road now does have more water pressure, but in my district, it does not have the pressure that you're talking about. And I confirmed that today with, with the city manager, so what you're saying is not exactly adequate.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else in rebuttal? Yes, sir.
My name is Peter O'Reilly. I live on two thirty-one North Albert Street, and I guess, listening today, I'm sorry if everyone has had a bad experience with the college students in this town. I will say there is a small majority that, you know, they do disturb the peace in this town, but a majority of these kids love this town just as much as all of you. I just graduated from school here, but I'm still here. I'm working in the area. I'm talking to you guys here today as a graduate of GCSU, as a, one of the managers over at College Station Student Apartments, and I can tell you, I really am up here, I can't really talk about the water pressure or the traffic or, you know, building stuff in your backyard, but I can say the demand, I believe it is there, from the good old-fashioned leasing. I already have a list of thirty kids, and GMC students haven't even gone out and looked for leasing. They're looking for affordable options in places such as this, and if people do want the students out of the center of the town, I mean, disturbing the peace, such as parties at night, things like that, I think it's something like this would definitely be a good option, and I'm speaking from myself and all the students I've gone to school with the last four years. But I think this is a great plan, but obviously, I don't know too much of the specifics, such as, you know, the traffic and noise complaints and stuff like that, but, you know, on the merit of this, based on merit, I think this is a very good plan, and obviously, little things need to be worked out, but from the students, this would definitely work out, and it would be filled. Thank you.
Anyone else in rebuttal? Any opposition rebuttal? Yes, sir. Well, you're in favor, but...
I am in favor. Two points that were, comments were made. One, I'm very passionate about, whenever we go to any community, ethics are what we were founded on. This company does the best job that it can do in every community that it builds a project in, and any representation of impropriety with this council or the planning commission is wholly unfounded, and I would adamantly deny and do so in public, that we've had any conversations of any port that would have anything to do with impropriety. Number two, there was a comment made that we're going to come into town, build this place, and leave and suck all the money out. This project has approximately, Alex gave me the number right a minute ago, on an annual basis, we'd be putting into the community about seven hundred thousand dollars, in addition to the hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in taxes. So it isn't, it is not a million dollars over ten years, it's almost two, it's double that. But my point is, is that we have a community that requires a lot of maintenance. We have a substantial budget that requires a lot of local employment, and we work with the community to employ local people. We do not try to bring anyone from outside of local communities whenever we're doing the ongoing operations of the community. So to that extent, we're not here just to make a buck. We're here to be a part of the community, to be a responsible part of the community, and I think that we have a plan that addresses a need in the town, and appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just say one thing? You know, you come to town, and I represent this district, as you know, and you didn't bother to talk to one person in my district that I represent. You didn't, you didn't talk to me, and you didn't bother talking to any, any of them, but yet you found your way to Greenway to offer to help them in any way that you could do it. Can I ask you why, if you're this type of company and you've built these things, why didn't you bother talking to some of the people in our community?
As we go through all of the different communities around the United States that we go to, we try to abide by the rules of the community and making sure that there's no impropriety involved in that. There are communities where meeting with one council member creates a quorum, and that's a problem. So when we go to a community, one of the first things that we do is we'll work with Mervin to announce the public announcement, a lot of, well, depending on what community you go to, but the surrounding area has a circumference of distance that you have to notify the adjoining neighbors, and that's what we go to, and we have a, we're very adamant about, making sure that we're contacting anyone within that jurisdiction of what the distance is. In this project, we're so far remotely removed from those distances, there's no requirement to contact any of those people. So just walking up and down the street is not something that we do in any place that we go. We contact the city officials, and then they direct us to the appropriate departments, and we work our way through that. When we have that meeting, we have, Mr. Bentley was met with, and if we have any additional comments or concerns, then we go out and address those. In this case, we did not have that. So we met with who we felt like we needed to, and at that, and as far as the community's concerned, along Underwood or Nelson Road, I can, I could do that, but if, for example, in, I'll bring up Kennesaw State. It's been represented that Kennesaw is very different than this area, as far as the school size, it is. Kennesaw is a very, very small community. It is very much like Millersville in a lot of ways, has a great downtown area that they're trying to revitalize. Kennesaw, when we did that project there, I met with over a hundred and thirty homeowners because the city has a distance that you contact all of them, and we had a planned town meeting. In this case, there was no planned town meeting in an environment for us to be able to do that. So I've done what I've done, not from trying to avoid someone, but we've done it by the rules of this city, so that's really how I can address that.
Yes, ma'am.
He answered the question about noise, but I'm not nearly as concerned about the traffic noise as I am the hundred and fifty in the swimming pool and the party parties on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday noise. That's the noise that I'm concerned about, the wall button, 'cause it's coming through the trees. It already does at the ball games. So I just wanted to clarify that the noise is not so much the traffic noise, it's the people noise, and it's just college students being college students. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm the mother of one, I certainly don't fault them for that, you know, and my daughter likes to have a good time, but I don't want her to have it at the expense of disturbing a neighborhood that's trying to go to bed at nine, ten o'clock. I do have these signed petitions from everyone on Nelson and Underwood Road, and I think it's already been established that there are plenty of vacancies in this town already. There are six bedrooms available on Underwood Road for any college student that would be interested.
Council members, any questions, comments? That concludes the evidence on this ordinance, and I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we disapprove this request, and I would ask that you explain that vote.
That's a motion.
I'm gonna a second.
Is that a second? Counsel, that is a motion and a second to deny the recommendation of planning and zoning. What that means, in layman's term, is a no vote is a yes vote. Therefore, if you want to approve the planning and zoning recommendation, you'll vote no. If you want to deny the planning and zoning recommendation, you'll vote yes. Any questions? Hearing non-honest clerk to call a roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Abstain on conflict of interest.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Conflict of interest being that I am the vice president of the Greenway Foundation, and it has been suggested that we may have a sway in this.
So we're ready to proceed, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to say yes.
Three yeses, two nos, and one abstention.
Therefore, the decision, advisory decision of planning, for planning and cancel, planning and zoning commission is denied. Let me say one thing, ladies and gentlemen, 'cause it's been, there's been several things that has been leveled at me, and I wanna make sure that you understand. First of all, I was not involved in the decision by the Greenway Authority. Did not know anything about it until it was brought to my attention. It's not a decision that was voted on by them. Sanctuary approached, in my, when it been told, approached the Greenway about this. In phase three, you're gonna have an extension of that path anyway, which is gonna run down this piece of property, not on Mr. Tomlin's property, but in between there and the green, in the O'Conne River, where you'll have an overlook, and it'll go back there. The only thing that I understand that this was going to do would be to allow a further extension, so I want you to understand. I did not have anything to do with this, nor would this have been a conflict of interest with me, because I, this was not a decision that I nor the Greenway Authority Board made. And in fact, it would have been one that we would have had to have made, had it come before us, but it was rather redundant, since nothing, it was just an offer. The other thing that has been, at least inferred, is that these gentlemen came to see me, and I had some authority as to what to do. I didn't see these plans until last week. I did see the information that Mr. Brookins has and a, and a plan of what they've done in other communities. I had people come to my office every other week about wanting to do something, and I send them to the appropriate people. In this particular case, I did mention, I think to Mr. Armstrong, that this had been a controversy before. You need to go, did I not tell you you need to go check on the zoning? Because I thought it had already been rezoned, but was not aware of the extension, of the extensive development that you were going to do, and that it would require this. So I told you to go check on it. I wanna make sure everybody understands that. I do not want any type of insinuation of impropriety on my part. I'm just, when somebody comes to my office, I will talk to them, and then I will send them to the proper people, and I will advise them, particularly in this case, that there had been some controversy on it before. So I wanna make sure that everybody knew that, that statement. Now we'll move on. Do we need to suspend? We'll suspend for a moment. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. No need to call the roll, because it was just a suspension, but we'll move to the next item, which is ordinance zero one zero. Council members, that has been removed to be discussed at a later date. In new business, I ask the clerk to read ordinance zero one one in caption, please.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance demanding the land development code to allow a special use of property located at nine hundred South Jefferson Street owned by Armando Castillo. The property is currently zoned CC, and the owner requests a special use for a motorcycle sales and repair shop, along with his existing automobile repair shop.
Counsel, that's the first read on that ordinance, and it is assigned to planning and zoning. Next, I would ask the clerk to read ordinance zero one two in caption, please.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance demanding the land development code to allow a special use of property located at nine oh two South Jefferson Street owned by Armando Castillo. The property is currently zoned CC, and the owner requests a special use for a motorcycle sales and repair shop, along with his existing automobile repair shop.
That is the first read on that ordinance also, and it's assigned to planning and zoning. Next, we have an alcohol license application to consider, and I ask the clerk if he would read that, please.
This is for Mandy Seach Chandler on behalf of B and M LLC, doing business as Stack, located eighteen twenty-seven North Columbia Street, and is for beer license consumption on premises.
We'll entertain a motion, counsel.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing non-honest clerk to call a roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Counsel, one last thing. I'm proud to announce that for the twenty-seventh year, the city of Millersville has received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, and I wanted to let you know that and make it a part of the record, and certainly let our citizens know that we are in good financial hands and well-managed, and I'll present this to the city manager at this time. If there's no further business to come before, counsel, entertain a motion to adjourn. If there's no further business to come before, counsel, entertain a motion to adjourn.